So, application Z11 that is involved, 45-51 Cherry Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, officials. My name is Anthony Sarsillo in the office of Lieutenant Sarsillo, offices in Millburn, C P R C I E L O O. Community Access Community Access. A multi-casual human services agency that provides support services to people with special needs, including access youth, people with disabilities, and people with affordable access needs. Its mission is to provide special needs people with access integrated into the community by giving them the opportunity for the independence and independence. This application is for those special individuals. The lots that are the subject of this application are two contiguous lots. Forty-five Cherry Streets and 47-51 Cherry Street. Both lots are in lot four elevator apartment building. Forty-five Cherry Street is a corner lot, but in Cherry Street. Community Access Community Access proposes a three-story multi-family building containing eighteen units. In this zone, lot four zone, a multi-family building with three or more components is a conditional use. Community Access is before this board seeking conditional use barriers relief because an applicant is unable to satisfy the following standard of conditional use requirements. And that is, a setback from parking lines is required to be three-quarters of the building height. For this particular business, a parking line setback of thirty-seven to thirty-one feet. In this case, the most right-side yard setback is 4.55 feet. The proposed left-side yard setback is 30.21 feet. The most rear yard setback is 16.5 feet. The proposed front yard setback is 10.5. In addition, the multi-family dwelling also requires a series of low barriers relief. That's leading to preliminary fire site control, a fall into a far lane, not fully consolidating in one block of the building. We received various needs informed through the Robert Brooks office. I have four witnesses. Mr. Chairman, if there are any questions, I'm prepared to answer. My call is to Sydney Blanchard.
Sydney Blanchard, B L A N C H M E R D I, in West Grand Street.
Mr. Blanchard, what is your position with Community Access?
I'm the executive director of that group of Community Access.
What do you intend to do with Community Access Community Access?
Community Access Community Access is a private company incorporated by the IRS, 511(c)(3). Its mission and purpose is to help people with disabilities and special needs become integrated into the community of people that have disabilities, non-disabilities, homeless, become low-moderating, rent-housing, become active citizens who live in the community. Community Access began in 1979, had a car, and consists now of working with over three thousand people with disabilities and as a sample of elderly people. We, back in 1984, began to support people with special needs, parents with disabilities, and we can partner children with families. Nineteen eighty-seven, we had our first housing commission as a member market. It was too high, property wasn't being taken, which would have been prices in the mid-teens.
Mr. Blanchard, I'm sure that the question on what are the member needs of your group and those that it serves?
Yes, there's over a waiting list of eight thousand people with disabilities waiting for housing services in the state of New Jersey. There's over 450 people who come home, people with disabilities that are waiting for support and housing that are waiting. There were many more of other special needs people, people with disabilities who count who had significant sort of problems and receive our support and love.
Look at your mission, Community Lead for additional houses.
Our mission is to help people become integrated. Community housing is essential to the economy. We have a waiting list of individuals waiting to receive service. The housing style is inclusive, as you're aware, it's not conducive to, for example, people with physical disabilities and here's a lack of housing needs capability. Many of you should walk up in barrier-free housing to also include your help.
You know, that work for now, the staff would also resolve these...
Yes, we, I envision the meeting units, number there will be people with disabilities, particularly we'll replace in five minutes that 40th Mountain Mall on West Grand Street, two blocks away, so we need to replace that on housing for people with disabilities. That housing is not very free. The building that causes the elevator and barrier-free accessible for physical disabilities as well as for special needs.
And let's look back versus prior. What do you propose to deal with?
We propose to develop moving that on West Grand Street. Five units we use for supervised parking for individuals. To stand the ability of our support of when people are home and when they're working. We envision another three or four units that we use for people with disabilities that need some support, that have twenty-four hours type of support. And to look at three to five units that should be for staff and also other individuals that tend not to have a property need, but for example, you know, in college, it's just a block and a way. We have staff that are low-moderating, they don't have a payment, but with housing, be able to walk to work within three blocks, as well as about three blocks away, four blocks away into the train station. So we're seeing some of those individuals who need to do that as well.
Well, we should take a look at integration of general public. Some of the units we also available, you said, since our general public?
Yes, that's part of our mission and purpose to have people with integrated community. Therefore, we have to have quite a community integrated with them. So that's absolutely a set point for me.
Can you talk about the funds from the consultant that additional housing?
Yes, certainly within the regulations of proper consultants and my preference as well, personally, we want to applaud that the whole landscaping added to me additional landscaping as part of our consultants, officials.
How many parking spaces will we set?
We're looking at seventeen parking spaces, looking to have one set aside for school vehicle that will be able to take one or two people with wheelchair and one or two staff that will be on-site there as people are home.
Based on your experience with these types of special needs people, do you have an opinion as to whether having the on-site parking is sufficient for the neededness?
Yes, most of the people, I would say ninety-nine percent of people that are in support, don't have a driver's license, don't drive, don't have a vehicle.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question for Mr. Blanchard.
Commissioner, any questions? Vice Chair, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe just two weeks ago, you appeared before this board also with another application that this board approved. That application seems similar to that, but just in a different location, is that correct?
Yes, in the sense that we're at West Grand Street, placing five housing units and with expanded office building because we have expanded staff needs. And so, moving that to Cherry Street to be able to replace that and try to meet some of the expanded needs of a waiting list of people with disabilities.
And indeed, is that right? I had the opportunity to drive past the site that around 3:37. And I have to tell you, it was on the parking spot that we had. The school is still on session, so we change that. How do you propose these seventeen parking lots? Where did you find seventeen spaces? That is why I trust to find one.
Oh, within the site, there'd be seventeen spaces that we're proposing, as well as, when I walk around, and we, two blocks, we're about looking for this. We have, I identified a capability about part on a median parking space, and we have destinations through that. Also, two blocks from Cherry Street will be for the access and we add over about seventy-five parking spaces. People will be home when the office will be out and overnight, weekend, so that would be plenty of space. And the people that would be living in Cherry Street, many of the people living in those individual units would not have cars. So that was just a little bit of space within the progress.
Okay, I have some more questions, but I think I'll save those for the professional, architectural side, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, any other questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Sarsillo.
How many apartments are going to the general public? Do you have an idea how many will be given?
Only four hundred.
About majority?
No.
Commissioner Cash, do you have a question?
Yes, I have some questions here. This is quite a big project. You request a preliminary and final style of project. Why does a tour in one year with a project as big as this one?
That may be best not for our experts, Mr. Commissioner, as opposed to the light witness.
Okay, the other question is, these are going to be, Community Access is a 511(c)(3) nonprofit organization.
Yes.
And the board of directors of the organization are aware of this application?
Yes.
They approached this application during the regular meetings before this application is presented to the board, am I correct?
Yes, they're aware of the heading, the status quo, yes. I am qualified to be your representative.
And these are going to be affordable housing rentals assigned and according to the application?
Certainly.
Affordable housing, affordable rentals?
Yes, low-moderating and average rental to mix.
For people with disabilities and...
And moderate, yes.
And how do you determine that disabilities and the income, do your boardists regard for that?
Sure, with housing, there's federal regulations and bill marketing tied to low-moderating income, as well as habit income, which is above low-moderating. And certainly, not the opposite, even the support, certainly all that have, many of my stuff is definitely.
So you follow the rules?
Excuse me?
You will follow the fair or stable status?
Yes, that has to...
Okay. No more questions?
Commissioner?
I have a question. Commissioner Cash, I have a thought of an interesting point. These units are supposed to be low, mid, moderate income units. And how do you designate which units are low and what... Let me rephrase the question. In order to present this to the board, to say this is going to be used for low to moderate income people, how many of these units need to be designated for their use? For you to come to the board to say, is it going to be ninety percent of years? Just one unit? How does that designation happen?
Well, there is no federal funding coming in here to tackle that. Just ninety-nine percent of people who support with disabilities are low to moderate income. Social Security is not...
But are ninety-nine percent of the units going to be designated for their years?
We're looking at up to thirteen, fourteen units for some things...
Low to moderate income?
Yes.
Is there anything that binds you to that? And the reason why I'm asking is, you're asking us to approve an application for low to moderate income of markets for people that fit that low to moderate income guideline. But what's to stop you in two years from renting this out at full market value, people that don't have enough car or have a car, that have two cars? And then we want to put markets to a rate, our answer, two-year deadline. So really, what's holding you? Or what's stopping you from doing it?
Well, several things. One major thing is our mission as a nonprofit, we've been violation of our mission in our corporate incorporation papers and the 511(c)(3) application to the IRS. So that's a big, don't fight like that. We're renting to people with disabilities, the majority, they're on low to moderate income. I wish, and I pray in this country, that someday, people with physical disabilities and no other disabilities have the problem of income being disqualified for low-moderating housing, have cars, and they have parking lot. So that's just not happening. Also, there's an economic reason, where the units that are not used for people with disabilities for our mission purpose, so those three, four, five units, there's a proportion of those units that are taxed, so we pay property tax. So with that, we would not economically be able to provide the services and pay full tax economically, which is one of the reasons that not-for-profit companies have to pay. So there's our mission, our statute board, insurance incorporation paper, the IRS, 511(c)(3) statutes, and then economic reasons as well, by the very nature of being a nonprofit, that mitigating our cost of being able to do that.
So overall, it's in your best interest to get as many of these units rented to low income individuals off?
Well, it's always nice to have, to moderate, low to moderate income people with disabilities, because that's our mission, that is our very purpose.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
I have one, Commissioner.
Commissioner Cash?
Regachi, property tax. Is the tax assessor going to assess property taxes on this property? Or because the property is owned by a nonprofit organization, he would be exempted from paying taxes?
If you can, yeah. I don't believe the answer is to be zoning.
I think that the question that the Commissioner's asked is a very questionable. But you should only answer if you actually know the question. I don't think that Commissioner Cash was basing his zoning opinion on this question that he's answering.
Yes, currently, for housing, for example, nine of those Ranch Street five units that is taken down, four of those units were occupied by people with disabilities, one was not. When we do our further state and protect conventions in the city, which is a annual obligation, we have to indicate the percentage of units and we are taxed accordingly. So it's already better than built into statutory procedure that the tax assessors, we can do this with.
Does Community Access own other similar properties? Would you provide affordable rent to people with low income or disabilities?
Well, the people that we work with, who are employed or don't work, even still there, have social security, disability, and social security supplement, so they have credit to come in. It's better policy. And also, we do have units that have federal, state, HUD, or other special funding that we have that follows Section 8 guidelines, thirty percent of income, things of that nature. We do that for all of our tenants with disabilities, if you will. So sometimes it could be twelve dollars a month. Depends on what the income is.
That's not a question that I ask. Does Community Access own other similar buildings? That provide affordable rent to people with disabilities or low income?
Yes, 90 West Grand Street, which we're covering, will be replaced. 96 West Grand Street, 116 West Grand Street, be example.
Do you know if these properties pay property tax?
As proportion with a further statement of some of the town, it's a hundred percent used by people with disabilities, which is not our preference. And for example, 90, 96 West Grand Street, half partial, because it affects the income and people with disabilities and non-disabilities.
So some of the most similarities of this project on by Community Access pay taxes otherwise other properties don't, based on the household services that that property provides, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and according to what we need for the patent for my application specifically, further statements for tax exemption and allocation of patents will be used that.
Thank you.
Commissioner? Any other questions?
Thank you. Mr. James, well...
Just want to make an announcement for application number Z1612, JB, JB Hunt Transportation. I don't want to hold you guys up here, but I don't think we're going to get to your application here tonight. You can carry for the next meeting.
This is like a, I have a question for the best...
Yeah, I have one, I'm just...
We have one of these for a module to place in, in line, and we'll take it and place it in five hours. It'll take five minutes.
Famous last words.
You can do that.
But by, what's the word, wait it out, that's where we have done that.
That's fine, just so that you know, this current application has three other witnesses beyond Mr. Werra. And I don't know if we want to impose that kind of time element on our board members And so we sent her. I would probably venture to say it's probably best if we carry it, but that's not my call.
Hold on a minute, if my eyes will make it out. But if your divorce, if you're not getting married, how about that?
I think it may be investigated.
Yeah.
That's all. So this application, Z1612, JB Hunt Transportation Incorporated, 322 Third Street, if there's any members of the audience that are here for that application, it would be carried to the next meeting of September 13, 2012, and no further notices will be posted. Yes, I think, James, on the way, hi, hi, Jefferson, you're listening?
Mr. Chairman, please describe the floor plans and the wish.
Hold it, hold it away. I'll try not to... Our team, floor plans begin on page A100, that's I believe the third page. The, there's a, what we call on the left side of the sheet, there's a parking and a basement floor. On the top of that, basement floor, there's three parking stalls that would basically be for the, the, Community Access hatters and staff vehicles. Then there's mechanical rooms down there, the services for the elevator and the storage area. Actually, I don't have a designate as such, but there's, there's room for it, yes. The ground level, when you enter the property from Cherry Street, there's a parking to the left side, and then you, and the building, there's four units on the ground floor, four one-bedroom units. As you enter the building, there's also an elevator and two stairs at either end of the corridor. Once you go up to the second level, which is on the next sheet, A101, there's... Once you go up to the second level, which is on the next sheet, A101, there's eight apartments on that level. And then to the right of that is the third floor, six apartments above that. So that makes up the 18 units. The predominant configuration is one-bedroom units. The upper floor, the predominant two-bedroom units. Since the building is served by elevator, all of the units are handicapped, adaptable. So handicapped person basically could reside in any one of these units. The building obviously combined with all the construction, so it'll be spread. The elevations on the last two pages, and we have two boards up front that have the building elevations on the old side. So from the Church Street and the parking lot, it appears as a three-story building. On Marty Street, you can see one of the basement walls, so it appears as a four-story building. That's what we call the.
Mr. Ware, what is that, is it a pure residential scale?
It appears as a residential scale. So it appears as a multifamily residential building. It's brick on the wall level with siding on the two residential floors from the parking lot side. Teeth grooves, so it's a residential look to it. Yeah, basically, it's just a muffled area, it's a residential, so actually high-rise residential. So we're in compliance in terms of type of house we're putting in the zone.
Commissioner? Yes, Commissioner Castro.
I have my question. There is a, there is something that I personally do not get very comfortable with. And it is the three parking spaces, backing into more space. And the issue of the parking spaces, as the chairman brought the attention of the board, are afraid you're concerned with me because you don't find anyone to park on Cherry. In essence, trying to find that page.
So what page is A100?
Let's go to the third page.
I think the architectural say A100.
I don't see where, A100.
Or the architectural.
Okay. Yeah, A100, that's the same. Second page.
But it's just parking and garage, basically.
I personally don't like the three parking spaces. Or seeing any back into more space. Those three parking spaces have to be eliminated. This application really does not have any, any way to park on Cherry. So in essence, on essence, for 20 years, otherwise, this is not an application where 18 units are proposed. If we eliminate those three parking spaces, that would force cars to park in the morning. We only have nine parking spaces.
We have proposed that, so if you want to do 3014, but what we're asking the board to consider is that on that local layout plan, that they need to move some of the handicapped, set them around and send them to go places. And that will be one of the vehicles sent in to park there. So it's something that can be in and out at a time, it would be done by a staff person familiar, and also in the weather, it's out of the way.
Mr. Ware, I don't see, I can't find any important parking spaces there. Can you show me where are the other five parking spaces?
The other parking spaces, if you go to, well, the architectural plan is on the first page, G000. The right corner is a miniature site, you can go to the engineer later. But basically, the parking on the upper level of Cherry is shown on this page.
You can park on Cherry?
It's a parking lot on the property.
Yes, Mr. Ware, it's almost near to impossible to park or to, to park on Cherry.
There's a parking lot on the site.
Yes, but you're proposing nine parking spaces there, if we eliminate the three that are on.
On the site, there's parking here.
Yes, imagine.
The three are on the local here. So we're not parking on Cherry here.
Mr. Ware, please count the board, the 14 on the left side of the.
Oh, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 on site.
Which space is that, Mr. Ware?
That, well, it's shown on two pages, it's shown on the first page of the architectural. And it's also shown on the E page or on the site.
I see, I see there are, there are parking spaces. But I have a case with those three parking spaces, and just giving you a bit of. The other issue is, I'm probably, that is not the, I have another question made under the document.
Mr. Chair?
Sorry.
Mr. Ware, we have a question. There's how many total units? 18. 18 total units, and they're all handicap accessible? Correct. Same token, you showed one handicap parking space. You showed one handicap parking space, but I think this, Mr. Ware should test it, like, you've got most of the handicapped people doing it, of course. I mean, I'll be very honest, you're in the right zone. You're in the right zone, the application is a valid application. It's just congested. You have here 14 or 18, of course, 17 parking spaces, but they're all nine feet or less wide. Nine foot or less wide, we know that handicap, what people's face will not, it's not nine foot wide. Well, the handicap space has the five foot, it's probably shown the engineer. No, I, Mr. Ware, I say clearly, all I'm trying to say is that if 17, you showed one handicap in the same token you had, 14 or 18 available handicapped apartments. Yes. I just find that a situation to be closed. I mean, that's what, that's the mission. I feel like everybody else presented their case, but right off the bat, I have a very insecure, natural.
Commissioner? Any question? Commissioner Gore?
When you say it's successful, the second floor of the elevator goes upstairs?
The, well, anyone who parks with a handicapped person could live here because the bathroom door size is a kitchen. There's a combination of handicapped.
The elevator does.
Because of both doors, yes.
Mr. Ware, let's name Q25, and I have just 328 part area discussion.
Mr. Ware, can you give the commissioners and support benefits of your condition to the field visiting here?
Sure, as I said, I'm staying in the area, so since I'm in 2007, I'm glad to be a candidate. I was acting on the course for the previous community access application for Church.
Mr. Ware, so what is the board, the existing conditions blocks, and what is proposed?
Yeah, I'm going to refer to a rendering that we prepared. We have a color rendering of the existing, the post-site, and now, this is a snapshot of the existing, referred to as I was describing. No, actually, this is not in the back, this should be mine. This is the first one I showed, A1.
You identified the right.
Certainly, A1 is a rendered version of the existing conditions plan, which was far from active. Essentially, the survey colors show, highlight the existing features. Okay, so essentially, a lot of the ground we've covered, I'll try to be brief, but kind of pull it together. What we're talking about, basically, two blocks, is tax lot 6164 and tax lot 6165. The two parcels combined comprise about 12,500 square feet, or roughly between a quarter and a third of it. As you see, they're located on the corner of Mary and Church Street, as you heard, the orange forest zone. They are bounded on the south by Mary Street, beyond that public housing development, to the east by the Shire Baptist Church, to the north by residential lot and studio parking complex, and to the west, Church Street, beyond that actual housing buildings. What you see on the map here is colored green represents the, the pervert surface, I'm sorry, the pervert surface, the grass, the gray area, just the driveway, and in the orange colors, the building. What's not really shown on here is the existing dwelling that did occupy the corner lot. You see a rendered retaining wall, just the separate existing driveway, but there was a structure on there at one time, and since the model, so those improvements are all done. So what we're looking at right now is a single, three-story building, driveway, sheds, all the original parking being removed, and the existing condition, the impervious coverage, the impervious coverage now represents about 4100 square feet, or about 33% of the lot. The existing rating of the lot is still unusual, and that's a fair amount of improvement on the property. The property slopes generally from north to south, the highest spot is located between existing houses, and then the lot falls away to the south fairly appreciably such that there's about a nine-foot elevation change between the northern property line and the southern property line along Mary Street. This is part of the reason that the drive under scenario, the spots that one of the commissioners objected to, that was one of the reasons that that whole scenario came about, because it led itself, or the change in grade led itself to a, we call a garage on, on Mary Street. Just a couple of notes about the streets that are out of the, Mary Street is a two-way street now. It doesn't permit, I should say, doesn't permit parking on either sides, which is parked available currently on both sides of Mary Street. Church Street is a one-way road that runs from south to north, that's the side. That also doesn't permit parking on both sides of that street. The proposal then refers to the structure of a three-story multifamily building with a total of 18 units, 12 one-bedroom and six or two-bedroom. There is a new driveway that's to be constructed off Church Street. There will be a secondary access into the garage or the three spaces off Mary Street. There's a total of 17 stalls that are proposed with this application. There is also a separate dumpster, actually, I'm going to flip quickly to the proposed, at least have a visual on speaking. Again, same scenario, you've got the red, the green, the building purpose lended, the orange, the main parking lot, gray, to the northern side, the garage under located in the southeast corner, and dumpster area, four retaining wall and a dedicated dumpster area in the southeast corner of the site. The, those total improvements that you see result in the impervious coverage of about 10,200 square feet, about an increase of 6,000 square feet over the existing condition. To round out, both the improvements in this new site lighting proposed, the whole building mounted lighting, is around the 10 feet, compared to 70 and 100 watt mount headlight. And again, there are different illuminated parking areas to the north, and the drive under and dumpster area in the southeast side of the property. There is some landscaping also shown on this drawing. Basically, you have two clusters of plants, which include some ornamental trees, such as dogwoods, some rhododendron and boxwood, those framing, you can see the post-driveway on Church Street. And then there are a couple of other dogs that are shown on the Church Street side, in front of a building closer to the intersection of Mary and Church. Currently, we don't show the green area, we don't show the landscaping on the Mary Street side. In a nutshell, those are the, that's a concise explanation of the improvements, what's there, what's proposed. Entertained questions?
Mr. Ware, is this second hand, what was submitted as part of the application, except for the.
That's correct.
The self-inflicted focus notes that a store board collection system for additional runoff needs to be restored, comment on that?
Sure, I don't think we have objection to that. We were taking the process for a lot more improvements on the site that are not shown now. But again, we've worked with this guy a number of times, his requirements have been very reasonable. I have no problem accommodating either pledges, almost no pledge of pledges, we'll work with him to make the compromise.
Any other additional comments on the second and the three parking spaces of Mary Street?
No, I think a lot of this is discussed, what Mr. Ware echoed, what I was going to echo, is basically that I think the community actually seeking to have three covered spots that is within their control, ones that are out of the weather, and ones that will be dedicated mostly to the band, one band that Mr. Ware talked about, and also some being able to support people who live there. So it's really attempting to recover spaces on the site within control.
Mr. Chair, any other questions? Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Mr. Gore.
Thank you. I don't know if you're the one to be able to answer this question, but I don't have a space. Can you answer that question?
I did, I didn't use all the cover, but I can tell you roughly what's there now.
Okay, the city planner proposed that a building of this size requires 60% open space. They're proposing 47%. That's a meaningful.
I'm sorry?
Amount, that's a significant amount of decrease to what should be there.
Okay.
Okay, has there been any consideration to maybe lower that number?
I have, I've been struggling to look for ways, I mean, essentially, we worked around building and parking lot to get as much space.
I don't consider the parking lot as space.
No, 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 what I'm saying is that the building dictated, obviously, the area of the building, it also dictated the area of the parking lot. So basically, that became an open space, predicated on the size of the building and the parking lot.
Yeah, I guess what the concern is here is the size of the open, thank you.
Commissioner, any other questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. James Watson. Mr. Chairman, Mr. James Watson.
Mr. Mayor, your name is Tom Flaherty, I want to ask you a question.
Yes, I did.
Sure.
James Watson, EKA Associates, business address 328 Park Avenue, Scott County, Missouri. Very briefly, I'll say, three weeks ago, licensed land surveyor in the state of New Jersey, as well as the state of Georgia.
He's a professional planner?
As a professional, and I'm also a professional planner, so I will do my best. Okay. Very quickly, we have a variance in our conditional use. We need to prove special reasons or hardship, and I think we comply at all. Strict application setbacks would mean a building envelope of 20 by 55. While still a problem with the building, this also gives us problems with parking. What I'd like to do is just quickly illustrate that. No, no, it's all right. It's over here, I'm sorry. No, it should, it should be more. All right, I'll make this all. Well, I'll do 82, if you care. Well, A23, 2012, A3 will be, A3 will be sightplanned with a building envelope drawn on that, that's also dated, May 21st, May 21st, 2012. Problem with the setbacks in the conditional use requirements is that everything is supposed to be 37 and a half feet from each property, that gives you a building envelope of about 20 feet by 55 feet. Putting a building here isn't a problem, it's a little bit of a problem because if you have a hallway on either one side, you'll make eight feet, eight to 20, to 12 for any room, or any of the doors to come off of that building. You need 44 feet for a parking space, not unkinded, take your back car out, so that means 37 and a half feet leaves you six and a half feet short for parking lot and for parking space. To address the comment made by the commissioner before about the 60% open space, that number comes from the fact that in this conditional use, you dictate that you have to have so much setback on the side yard that if you develop every lot using that formula and everybody stuck to it, that would be a problem. But the fact is, in this neighborhood, and in almost every situation where you have high-rises in this area, you don't need setbacks, and that squeezes everything, doesn't give you room for the parking areas, it doesn't give you room to put the landscaping in that you really should. It's a problem everywhere, I understand. To continue with the proofs of the variances, I believe that we comply with special reasons E, I, and M for the municipal land use law, along reading into the record, like, under E, our application promotes harmonious neighborhood, the public housing, church dominate Murray Street, and while multi-family uses dominate Church Street. We have almost a blend here, but we're putting in a commercial apartment building, and everything on Church Street fits that, but when you look at Murray, you have high-rises and more commercial, you have the jail back there, you have a street that really has nothing on it, as a round event down by the. Under I, which is creative design, at the new park design, addresses the abnormal rate change on lot, pushing the building towards the corner allows for more parking on the side, gets cars off the street. Under M, which is basically reducing the cost of development, all roads and utilities improvements are in place right now, we're tearing down dilapidated structures, and we're rebuilding with brand new buildings. We also meet some of the goals of your master plan, specifically, under section two of your housing plan element, I believe, under the objectives, we need number two, which is to continue to support fund removal of derelict abandoned structures. I believe we comply with number four, which is to continue to provide sound rental housing at a variety of income levels. Number five, also is to support the creation of larger units for larger households, and I'm talking about the two bedroom units in this complex. Next, we have to look at whether this site particularly suited, and because this isn't approved use in the district, it's just a condition to use, you actually have approved the site, and you consider these sites particularly suited. In this case, because it's on the corner, we have access for the underground parking from Murray, which is unused, east of us past the church, it's just vacant land down, I don't know if you can build in there because of flooding conditions. There is parking available down there, that this site lends itself to great change and the situation that went with the signalized intersection at Cherry and Murray, and also at Cherry and Jersey of the street. So the entire block between Cherry and Jersey has light at all, and so it controls traffic, it gives you breaks where people can get out of our parking lot onto Cherry, and because Murray is so underutilized, we can actually have time where we can back out of spaces that are underneath. As testified to, we want to restrict these spaces first and foremost for the vans that are the handicap accessible vans that Community Access uses, also for the staff that serves the person. If it would make you feel better, spaces, if we need to, we could probably just put a garage door on and shut it, you worry about people accessing it that don't belong there. We can sign it, we can sign it underneath, but they really do have a need for the vans to be ready to go because of the personnel that are living in these, in these units, and it also makes it more convenient and safer for the people that work in municipal buildings, have a place to park, they can use it down without having to shovel it out or worry about the weather. I don't think there's any negatives to this application at all, as far as detrimental negatives. This is a highly congested residential area on Cherry Street, and you have high-rises and commercial buildings. Murray is south. Going through, finishing up the bulk areas that we need to talk about tonight, most of them are superseded by the conditional use restrictions, but in Mr. Galore's letter, I think his name's H.I.J., ages about this Wall Street apartment, was testified to, the people that use these units are handicapped, most of them will provide transportation by Community Access. All Community Access vans, I had this discussion before, or a couple of days ago, we had a meeting, all of their vans load from the back. So the comment made by one of the commissioners, we're about handicap offer space, they had kind of anticipated this, and they're loading things place from the rear. They actually had a training for the drivers, and over here, the desk application, that was one of the reasons for the expansion on Grant Street, so that they would have facilities to show these people how to do this, and they bring everybody to Church Street, you know, certain periods. There's another comment, I, the open space, that is testified to before, I believe that number comes from the fact that you have three quarters of the building height as a setback, that creates a lot of openness. The problem is, you really can't develop a lot reasonably using those restrictions. If you add reasonable sections where you had 10 feet on each street and 5 feet off the rear, that number would be decreased significantly. Finally, J, visibility from intersections on 10 feet, whereas 75, the required is on 10 feet, whereas 75, 67 proposed. As I stated before, Cherry and Murray is a signalized intersection, so you don't have the hazard that you would a long strip or an unstagnished intersection, you just come flying down the street. Also, Cherry is a one-way towards north, and the next quarter up also has a traffic signal, the entire intersection is signalized. In the balancing after C2, we have to talk about the negatives, as I said before, we have the parking that we're providing can be addressed and rationalized because the usage that is going there is for handicapped people, so that means people that be assisted within someone with the help, so they don't have cars. We believe that the amount of parking that we dedicate will service this building gap. Next thing you have to do in C2 is balance the positive and the negative. What I didn't really go into, this is inherent beneficial use, we've been here before with this, I think everybody recognizes that, and that's the big hurdle to get over, is if you're an inherent beneficial use, you allow us to allow you to do other things like this. When you do the test positives, I think all of the inherent beneficial use are, it's plus or equal, and I mentioned the municipal land use law, and the master plan goals outweigh any negative that anybody can come up with. To that end, I believe, it's my opinion, that there's no substantial detriment, there's only more than some master plan in the city of Elizabeth. Some of that, we have the special reasons we need for E variances, our sites need to be suited, like I said, if you don't act on this only more than some master plan, and like I said, the C2 argument, I believe, is positive to this application, far outweigh any negatives. That's it.
Mr. Chairman? Vice Chairman, please.
Let's get back open space here. Sure. If the building was smaller, would there be more open space?
Uh, yes, because you wouldn't put a parking lot around all four sides. If you complied with setbacks from the conditional use though, you centered the building where I have the red lines, and with most parking, probably have the front yards on Murray and Cherry Street notable for open space.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, have a question. Mr. Watson, what's the legal side for the handicap parking space? The, if you're talking about the inaccessible, it's 80 for the space, 80 for the aisle, if you have a driveway, sorry, driveway, I said. What if you start with a handicap person driving?
Eight feet for the aisle and eight feet for the space, so you're talking 16 feet total. And that's for a side load van. And like I said before, we had these discussions, and we talked about this before we got here about two days ago, that Community Access smaller vans are rear loaded, so in essence, making that into a parking space, load up a six-foot side.
Your plan, all right?
Yeah.
Think it's wise to put handicap space in the center of the parking lot when the entrance is totally out of the set side?
The main entrance to the end of the building. The way handicap parking works is, it's dictated by the state, you have to have a roof with certain restrictions, you can't go over 2%, you have a crossroad you have to have, and you have to buy the, have the shortest route to the handicap entrance or the main entrance. So where this is situated is dictated by rate changes and location to the entrance that the handicaps necessarily can go.
Seven and a half foot wide stall, that, in your professional opinion, legit?
I believe that you comply with the city code, I believe it's not, I can check the scale, I'm putting my mouse right there.
Sure.
Scale. Sure.
I'm putting my mouse right there. All right, you're using, you're using the architecturals.
I don't want to forget this, the square van, don't use those. I'm referring to our sightplan, exhibit 83.
Attention. You're also using the scale.
Yeah, but this is drawn on scale, so you're going to, as you mentioned, scale. Sure, our dimension, if you look at the sightplan, is nine by 18.
I'm going to go next to that.
Next to the handicap, he's got 11 and 5, so we've got 15. Next to dimensions on our van, like I said, don't, go to the EKA plans.
Which one?
Uh, sheet two. Yes.
If you doesn't have the dimension.
We have, yeah, I may have to drag it, but, yeah.
They may even mention, oh, no.
Mr. Watson, this is your magnet.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm referring to sheet two of six, the way that's written, go back one more. There we go. I'm referring to sheet one of six, the handicap aisle's dimension is five feet, space is 11, all of the parking spaces are, dimension is nine by 18. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a question?
I'm just referring to, this is a building. It's a building, that's going to emphasize this ability, people, you can only have one handicap parking stall. 18 apartments, 18 handicapped people.
I understand. Let me testify to, most of the people that use the handicap or the low or moderate don't have cars, they don't drive, the people that are handicapped and have their own car, which is what a handicap space is supposed to be for. That's usually very low, because of the income of these people, they don't have the money to get their own van that has the lift, that has the adjustments where they can actually drive the car.
Much the same handicap person pulls it, where does he park it?
When you get to the site with your own van, with its own car. If it's a car that operates like a regular car, you could use a regular space, because you don't have a lift. The handicap spaces are made for lift vans, that's why you have the aisles, so that they can unload, you can get the platform from the van onto the ground. If you're, make a small story short, it's a workshop like Ace the Bear, who's one lady came in one time, who was on crutches, she was handicapped, stickers, parking, if she had a normal car, she just had handbrakes set up, or she'd drive the car.
If they're going to pull out the little, their wheelchair, pull it aside, and then leave that extra room mobilized?
Right, that's basically, you're talking about lift.
Talking about regular person, I've seen, I've seen handicapped people pull out of their cars, to say, pull out the wheelchair, they manage to do it all on the side of the car, right? I'm saying, the second person pulls in that lot, where does that person park it? Or how does that park it?
I'm not an expert on how wheelchairs out of a car, but I would imagine, thinking you got a car with a wheelchair, it would operate the same way as a normal person, the door swing would be the same, and that's all engineered into the width of your parking space.
Mr. Watson, I can see that you're black and white here, basically, it doesn't matter, I mean, I totally understand, except the building being designated for its purpose. I totally understand, except the building being designated for its purpose, for control. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
As much as you, I understand that you're describing the techniques, the methods, and I understand a hundred percent. Just one parking space, and first of all, the biggest thing is they become a park. It's tough on the average, I agree, you know, why would you pull it?
Well, the entire area is where the best thing to build is to dense, build too dense to many units. Think about it. I don't know if I agree with you, I think, I mean, you could dedicate more handicap aisles or real spaces if you think.
Can, we can, if you want, you must be know that, we can, it's another space.
Right, I agree. It's dense. I don't know if I agree, okay, let's move on, okay.
Commissioner, any other questions?
Well, I'm trying to guess, did you consider less apartments, smaller building, more apartment, more open space?
You can, but then the economics went into play and it's not worth redeveloping a, and I think make that simple, you're mainly to testify about planning use, why you grant the variances.
There any other comments, Commissioner?
I have a question for Mr. Gallardo, if you may. Seems that some commissioners have brought up some serious concerns about parking, about the way that the car is pulling in and out of the building. Can you voice our consultant's opinion, and we'll start with what Commissioner Castro said regarding parking spots fifteen, sixteen, seventeen on page A one hundred, about them pulling, reversing onto Murray Street, let's start there.
As indicated by the letter, we also have a concern with those parking spaces. We tend to discourage parking spaces back to like the hundred and four oh, like to see those parking spaces accessed, from the center aisle to the central parking area. That curb, on scale, it's hardly, but it looks like it's about fifty foot wide, we try to discourage this kind of wide curb, but they tend to be a safety hazard. Respect to the overall parking scheme, I believe that parking is insufficient, there's eighteen units, seventeen parking spaces, and the parking spaces are bad for you. You put you at fourteen parking spaces for eighteen units, I don't think that's an acceptable ratio, even with the, you know, low income or excessive ability, you still like to see a ratio of about one point five units, about one point five spaces per unit, even the RSIS, which actually require two spaces for you to support, whereas for one point five spaces per unit. Respect to what Commissioner McCollum was talking about, with the handicap parking spaces, a true handicap parking space would be twelve feet, and that's a non-van accessible parking spot, standard handicap parking spot, which would be accessed from a regular car, not a van, would be required to be twelve feet, that provides for adequate parts of our parking space for it, so a person with a wheelchair would be able to pull in and out of the door if they open their door situated wheelchair or any other, has any, so that spaces would be enough cars. Can't be no idea, and I can't just name the parking spot that's for non-handicap persons. Van, I believe a van handicap parking spot needs to be sixteen feet, in which case this plan would have one van spot as well as handicap parking spot. So I think if we're really large number of handicap people in this building, I do also agree with Commissioner McCollum is that we want to see more handicap accessible parking spots. If the program in the building is where, you know, services handicap people, it's expected to be more handicap parking spots. So it concludes the argument that park, really hard enough parking spaces to support the number of units that are open.
I just have one last question for, come on. Not talking about the size and layout of the parking, RSIS has parking standards for different types of buildings, office, warehouse, so and so forth. Does RSIS have a parking formulation for buildings like this that are used by handicap people? Is it less than, let's say, a building that wasn't being used by handicap person?
No, there's no specific criteria, it's two parking spaces for a two bedroom unit. They do not have a provision for a reduction for the size of the unit, just like the building, it really comes on a judgment call on the parking. Thank you.
Real quick, to address your comment, we could put another handicap space in there by flipping the aisle on the handicap space, or the aisle between two spaces, we could pick up another handicap space that way. Follow what I'm saying?
Mr. Commissioner, before I go further, I would ask that, perhaps you get a more feel from the board members to voice the applicant who wants to build well in the city, and I would ask that a little bit more feedback from the board, perhaps a whole front row of that in front of the client, if that's the sense I'm getting there.
That's fine, I can't testify on behalf of my fellow board members, but what I can tell you is that we've heard from all, all the commissioners, it is a serious concern, primarily about parking, primarily about a parking space, and I think it's a legitimate concern that, that the board doesn't want to impose a building like this, and I'm not speaking for them, I'm now speaking for myself, the board doesn't want to impose a building like this on this area and make a bad parking situation worse. Is it a good idea? Yeah, it's great, it's great that somebody's investing money in, you know, trying to bring housing to people of low environment, great idea. Implementation wise, and I'll leave this to my fellow board members, they dispute their mind, but implementation wise, I think we're laughing. But, Commissioner?
I have to agree with, and I have to agree with Commissioner McCollum, there is a serious part of the exit here. This building is huge. Eighteen units is over two.
Commissioners, any other comments?
I have no.
Commissioners, over.
I've heard some people say that the area itself is really congested, so it's letting the working force make it be worse. My right here to, to obviously, we love your operation on this, I do, I just feel like they seem a lot, a lot of people, a lot of things wrong. Maybe if we make the building smaller, even if the people would appreciate more of the space, we'd like to see more green, we'd like to see more spaces.
Also, Mr. Chairman, RSIS was to request supporting spaces for young, you know, at the minimum, we could agree to one, but in fact, we're very opposed to that.
Commissioner, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, at this point, whether we vote to disapprove this application or whether the client chooses to withdraw it, the outcome will be the same. No, I'm not going to withdraw it, we're actually to discuss the client first and then demand and carry this to another, yeah, as possible, but I'm not just controlling
That's perfect, well, why don't you take some time to speak to your client about what you just said, and the board will look at our resolutions that we need to adopt before we leave regarding our class.
I think I can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the applicant seeks to.
Commissioner?
Chairman, there are. Sorry. The applicant seeks to be voted officially to the chairman, we have a need to buy some plans, we submit some laws plans, they again, to hear us okay, and they're going to apply some action, we're just to respond on our new laws plans.
Do you look at the table, this is bill October?
What's the second?
Go by the next, go by David, go by David. Let's go over the second one, we're driving. Commissioners, could it both now to allow the applicant to table this application and bring it back with viable plans on October eleventh?
Motion, yeah.
Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Castro? Second by Commissioner Castro.
Who's the motion?
Motion by Commissioner Castro. Second by Commissioner Castro.
Question, I have.
Aye.
Commissioner Castro.
Aye.
Commissioner Castro.
Aye.
Commissioner Silva. Aye. Reverend Dixon. Commissioner Donald.
Aye.
Chair, do you agree with this?